All right, Chris, can you speak? And let's see if we can hear you. Okay, we got you.
All right.
Good job, Alan.
All right, we will move on to a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America.
To the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
I will entertain a motion to receive the agenda as proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. Item number two is public comments. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to provide public comment? If you would, please approach the microphone and provide your name and address. Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to provide public comment? All right, claims and payments, Michelle.
All right. You want to do a motion first?
Yes, this is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlement of such claims as allowed. Now make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. So our total bill payment today is $669,238.80. And the 60-40 fund payments are $3,436.27. We do have a few larger payments today, mostly construction projects. The Origin Design, who is the architect for the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, we're paying them $42,716.50. We also have a purchase on for a garbage truck body from Triple B Equipment for $91,865. There might have been a couple more. It's just the time of year we're buying a lot of Mile Rock and Spot Rock on the gravel roads, so $69,455 for Mile Rock and another $50,230 for Shoulder Rock. Everything seems to be in order. Any questions today?
All right, roll call vote, please.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tronka.
Yes. Item number four was project updates from department heads and elected officials. Kathy?
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, engineer. A brief update on the roads. Water has reseeded over on the Wapsa Pennekin to allow our bridge painting contractor to come back and resume painting those beams on the other side of that bridge. Hopefully, by the end of this week, that work will be done. On our other bridge project on Cedar Wapsie Road, Kramer, our prime contractor there, that bridge is just about complete. We are hoping that that will be reopened tomorrow, and then that will allow C-57 to reopen. Last week, seal coating countywide, that took place, that is complete, and we are continuing to replace culverts on Tama Road. Those are large culverts in preparation of a resurfacing project next year. There is a Northeast Iowa tractor ride this Saturday morning on Dizert and then up through Tama, on Tama Road over to La Porte City. We will have that road ready. We may not have an asphalt patch on the road, but the road will be prepared for the tractors to go over Tama Road. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Board. Caitlin Emmerich, Public Health Director. I have a couple of updates administratively and from our operation teams. From an administration aspect, I just have a couple of updates on what's happening at the state level as it impacts public health. For, I think for a while, I've been providing an update that we anticipate public health alignment to be introduced in the 2025 legislative session. We received word just recently that that is not anticipated to happen, which was quite a surprise to us. We were thinking that was going to happen, but our, the leadership at HHS and the Public Health Division is saying that that is not expected to be introduced in the 2025 legislative session, so we're pivoting a little bit for that. However, we do have a couple of opportunities to have ongoing conversations with Iowa Department of Health and Human Services leadership. On September 5th, we've been asked to host a summer tour for Health and Human Service leadership staff. I believe Director Garcia will be coming. It is an invitation-only event, but representative from the Board of Supervisors will be invited to attend, along with a representative from our Board of Health and other partners in our local public health system, including Early Childhood Iowa Representatives, our Community Action Agency, our maternal health contractees, and nearby contiguous counties' environmental health and public health representatives. And so I just wanted to make sure you're all aware of that and keep that on your radar. Another thing that is exciting is that we've been asked to host a candidate forum by the Iowa Public Health Association on September 19th. So basically, we're providing the space, and the Iowa Public Health Association is providing much of the content. And all of our state senators and representatives will be invited to that candidate forum. We will have an opportunity to share a little bit about what public health does and some of the things that we're working on and our accomplishments. And of course, our Board of Supervisors will be invited to that as well, so just to save the date for that one. And so it'll be a busy month in September. Administratively, we are, we've been very busy with kind of year-end. I think I, the total I have for grants that we wrote in the last couple of months was 11 grants, and we negotiated more contracts than that. We are down to four vacancies, which is a really low number for us. I'm very excited about that and want to celebrate that. And our operational teams have been very busy. Our environmental health team, this is always a very busy time for them, both on our food and our well and septic and pool inspection side and all of those things. And our outreach teams have been out and event, out and about at many events over the summer, so if you happen to see them, please tell them hi. Any questions for me?
Nope.
Thank you.
Any others in? Mike?
Morning, Board. Mike Kendrickson, Director of County Conservation, just wanted to quickly let you know we have sustained some damage from the storms yesterday. Wind didn't affect us, that's what we were concerned about. Sounds like everything right now is Hickory Hills, and it's been hail damage, to the point where the Lexon sheeting on our, on our shop storage got holes blown right through it. And, and Al told me this morning, all of them. We do have some vehicles that have sustained some significant damage, and so we're assessing all that right now. We'll let you know. I'll start working with Lori as soon as I start getting all this information, and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
Any others in the boardroom that would like to provide an update? Are there any department heads or elected officials on Zoom that would like to provide an update? All right, item number five, approval of the minutes from July 9th, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Item number six, hearing. We have a hearing coming up in regard to a rezon request by Kim Rodinghouse. The consent agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second. Karen, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Tronka.
Yes. Item number eight, 8A, a resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received from Sedentka Excavating and Habitat LLC of Lisbon, Iowa, for the replacement of the aging septic system at McFarland Park with one that is up to code and designed to handle larger crowds and larger camping units in the amount of $59,997.50 and utilizing American Rescue Plan funding be accepted and contract awarded. The same has been approved by the Conservation Board and recommended for approval by the Board of Supervisors. Mike?
Any questions at all? This is pretty routine. We did, we got a really nice bid on this. We felt really good about it and well below the estimated cost, and everything has checked out, so.
Yeah, that seems like a really good price. What was the estimated cost?
$80,000, so.
So moved.
Second, this is a, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tronka.
Yes. Item 8B is a resolution to approve, approve a contract amendment number two for the professional services contract with IMEG Engineers of Rock Island, Illinois, for the McFarland Park Septic System Replacement Project for Blackhawk County and utilizing American Rescue Plan Funds for construction services to include construction administration and observation contract amendment number two for construction services for this project is a not-to-exceed amount of $7,000 for said services. The same has been approved by the Conservation Board and recommended for approval by the Board of Supervisors.
Again, this is just construction engineering. Make sure quantities are fine and everything's being done right, and it's a not to exceed $7,000, so.
All right. So moved.
Second.
Okay, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tronka.
Yes. Item 8C is a resolution that the agreement between Blackhawk County Social Services and the State of Iowa Judicial Branch for reimbursement of the judicial hospitalization referee for services performed from July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025, in Blackhawk County in an amount not to exceed $56,958.8, 70% of which will be paid by CSS and 30% which will be paid by the county be approved and direct the chair to sign.
So moved.
Second. If you want to just address what the comments you made, do your email for everybody, that'd be great.
Thank you. Lena Height, the District Court Administrator, and the amount here is just, I wanted to say is like a 3% request across the board, which is in line with, with all the other judicial branch employees and stuff. And Diane Larson, our hospital referee, has come, comes with 21 years of service, and she really is a valuable asset to the judicial branch, so this contract is really important to us, and I appreciate everything that you guys do for us.
I bet.
Thanks very much for coming, too.
Any other questions? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Tronka.
Yes. Item 9A is a resolution that the taxes on submitted property 9014-03-376-017, Mowry Farms Edition Lot 17 in Washington Township, which have come into public ownership through community development efforts, public infrastructure improvement, of public purpose acquisition, be abated, and to instruct the county treasurer to adjust her records accordingly pursuant to Code 427.2 and 445.63 in the total amount of $513.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tronka.
Yes. Item 9B is a resolution that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Katherine Nicholas, county engineer, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same to purchase one new 2024 Ram 2, 2,500 truck in the amount of $48,853 from Thies Motor Company, Belle Plaine, Iowa. Kathy?
Yes, this does come out of our FY '25 budget, capital budget, new pickup truck for our maintenance superintendent. We did find three comparable quotes for dealers that had brand-new vehicles sitting on the lots, so we would like to be allowed to purchase the Dodge, the Tradesman pickup.
And we went from a half-ton to a three-quarter ton?
Yes, for this particular individual. Yes. Thanks.
I'll make that motion.
So moved.
All right, this is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Tronka.
Yes. Item 9C is a motion to approve Gibby's Catering and Vending to use Blackhawk County grounds on July 24th, 2024 from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the southeast parking lot of the Pinecrest Building located at 1407 Independence Avenue, Waterloo, Iowa.
So moved.
So moved.
This is, uh, let's see, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right, it is now about 9:18, and we are having a hearing on proposed ordinance number 77-287, Rodinghouse Rezone. I will make a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication of notice of public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. All right, next we have a motion to waive the first reading as notice was published on July 6th, 2024 in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier, and accordance with the requirements of the Code of Iowa, and publication was approved under request submitted by Kim Rodinghouse Rezone, 1.1, 1.51 acres located west of 5615 Miller Creek Road from A agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district to build a new single-family home.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. It is approved. The next is a motion to close the hearing as oral and written comments were received and placed on file. All right, I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, we do have comments.
Good morning, Board. Lexi Schneider, planner. The applicant wishes to rezon 1.51 acres from A to AR in order to construct a new single-family home and pole building. The applicant plans to keep the rest of the tillable acres as tillable land and plans to plant trees on the property for windbreak. There is no plan to subdivide the property as they want to keep the property as natural as possible. The site has a land evaluation score of 64 and a lease score of 154 indicating low agricultural value. At the Technical Review Committee, Krista Billhorn of Iowa DOT noted they will need to know the location of the driveway. The applicant later noted that the driveway will be located directly south of the rezon area and enter from Miller Creek Road. Krista had no further comments on the location of the driveway. And Ryan Brennan with the Blackhawk County Road Department noted the applicant should contact the engineer's office to ensure the driveway location is okay, if they have not already done so. The request to rezon a 2.05 acre parcel was presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission at the regular meeting on May 21st, 2024. The request was denied because a motion to approve failed 2-2. Bojor recommended the applicant to decrease the size of the rezon area and push it into the timber slightly so the rezon area will be taking less farm ground out of production. At their regular meeting on June 18th, 2024, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the request with a 3-1 vote and Bojor voting no.
Any questions for Lexi?
No, I was, I was curious. Well, I know when it was the 2-2 vote, I said that, I saw that Mr. Bojor had his comments were recorded, but I didn't know why the other person was. But I said it is low ag value. We did have that was determined, and it was unfortunate that it was that close a vote at the time, but no, I was gonna say, I was gonna say the people that are, the applicants here too would like to comment.
Good morning. Kim Rodinghouse, address 7527 Gersh Road. Yes, we did attend both of those meetings at the request of Mr. Bojor. We did reduce the size of the rezon area and moved it back into the timber a little bit. We can't go too far into that because there's a drop-off, but the surveyor did identify for us, along with Farm Credit Services and their information, that the area that we're trying to rezon is the least productive out of the low-productive farm. And we have had the driveway approval from the county, and it will be along the west side of the road coming off Miller Creek Road. And so I believe that we've done, we're hoping that you'll approve that request for 1.51 acres. Any other questions?
So did that inconvenience you much? I was gonna say, as far as making that change, I was gonna say.
No, no. I mean, we didn't, and the minimum requirement is 1.5, so we thought we'd go a little over that just for some space to decide where to put the house. I don't even think we'll use 1.5, but to rezon it, that's the minimum requirement, so we changed that. And we'll put it as back as practically as possible without getting too close to that edge that drops off about 25 feet into the timber, so don't want to be too close to that.
And how much of the timber do you anticipate having to take down?
Oh, there, we won't take down any of the timber. We'll just move, we'll put the house as close to that as we can, aware of the requirements for the, both sides of the house or area. But no, we don't intend to, that's kind of why we want to build there.
Yeah. Any other questions? Comments? All right, this is a motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed to closing the hearing say no. The hearing is closed. I will make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the Board of Supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
Second.
Let's see, Karen, this is a resolution. Answer your names.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tronka.
Yes. Next is the ordinance adoption. I will make a motion that the ordinance, amending ordinance number 36 as amended, the Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February 2nd, 1999 by adding subsection number 287 to section 6, paragraph B, re-zoning certain property as described in the above requests submitted by Kim Rodinghouse, and to consider the same for adoption, and if adopted, would be known as ordinance number 77-287.
So moved.
All right, this is an adoption of an ordinance. Please answer as your name is.
I think you made the motion, didn't you?
I made it.
So I'll second.
Uh, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Tronka.
Yes. Item 9E, discussion possible board action, allocation of amounts budget for rural circulation of Blackhawk County libraries. Michelle?
Yes, I had requested that the libraries send me their allocation worksheet that where they calculate the statistics that are required, and when I got that, I realized that I didn't have it before the meeting when we approved the contract, but realized that Dunkerton actually had reduced their library budget, and we had also increased our allocation, so we were over a provision in the contract that requires each of the cities that we would fund no more than 50% of what they're funding for their libraries. So one of the libraries did ask if, how that would work, because we, based on the current version of the contract, we should reduce the amount to Dunkerton by $7,415. And often, when we approve this through the budget process, we don't have that information at that time, so the board typically approves a pooled contribution, just a dollar amount, and then later, the libraries go through that calculation and provide us with how much each library would get of that. So one of the libraries wondered if we would be interested in reallocating that 7,400 to the remaining libraries. So it's just a question of what the board wants to do. I think I laid out some options. You may have another one in mind, but you can either, you know, enforce the contract as it stands, and we simply reduce the amount paid to Dunkerton. You can choose to reallocate the excess to the others, and that would, then that would use up our full budgetary allocation. Or you could also amend the contract to allow Dunkerton to receive the additional $7,415.
I'll make a motion to reallocate the remaining funds to the other libraries.
How did Dunkerton, why did they reduce it? Did they limit their hours?
I don't, I'm not aware. I'm, I hate to say, but I'm assuming it's probably an issue with budgeting and the new state rules on how cities have to budget, but I honestly don't have that information.
It was just this year.
Yes, I did go back and check. Last year, last year was fine. This is the first year we've run into this. They, they did reduce their tax support, I think, by about $8,000 or $9,000 this year. And we're, we also do this kind of two years behind, so we're actually basing this on the FY '23 statistics, because those are the last ones they have.
And you had sent an email about the timeliness of this? Are we under a timeline?
Not really, because I'm sure they always are happy. That was a different email about a project. I'm sorry. I know, had to think about what you were talking about for a minute. They did happen to send an email yesterday that the Imagination Library, the Dolly Parton Library, they are running out of funding to do that, and I don't know what happens with that, because I do know they had to make a several-year commitment to that project when they signed up. I think there's a contract with Dolly Parton or something there.
They didn't say enough in their email to explain some of it.
No, they didn't. I just know that from prior, when they were originally talking about it, so I don't know what their options will be with the library either.
Well, Chris, and to be fair to you, the reason I didn't second and wouldn't support that is really because this was contract-driven, and we have a contract in place, and those were the requirements of the contract, and I guess to make exception for one, to me seems we'd make exception for all, or change the contract, or however we want to do that, I guess, in the future, but to do it at this point in time when someone, one of the communities had reduced their amount and we just didn't know the amount yet, I guess that, that's why I wouldn't be first dividing it among everyone else.
Yeah, I just want more information, and I'd like input from the other board members.
Is there anything more we need from them, too? I mean, what you're explaining is kind of what happened, too, but it's just having everybody involved. I'm fine with that, so you want to table this? It was just for discussion. We don't have to.
Right, right. We don't even have to make a motion to table.
I guess.
Chris?
I guess, and that's why we want to table. I'll just say that I see it as, I mean, it's just, it's just $7,000. I see it as a reward to the cities that were, I'd say wise enough not to cut their, their library budget, knowing that they would jeopardize these matching funds from us, or these funds from us, so I think it's unfortunate that the Dunkerton budget went down.
It is, it is. Like I said, I think we actually contributed more this year than we ever have before, and I was pretty pleased about that, so, but thank you.
All right, we will move on to item 9F, discussion of the Washburn Sewer System Proposed Rate Increase, and we all received.
Additional information?
Yeah, not sure reviewed at all. I didn't know if Gabby was gonna review that with us and try to, but we may not take action today on that either.
Yeah.
I can, if you want me to.
Yeah, go ahead, Gabby. Give us your input.
Well.
I know you said.
I'm the messenger. So we have developed a, we've developed a frequently asked questions document that we can post on the website. We have a letter that's ready to go out to residents once you are ready to approve it, and then we've also drafted a magnet to Mr. Mush's point that a lot of people don't know what to do if the pump malfunctions or when they should call. We've developed a magnet, working with the Contractor Urban Services, to send out along with that letter so people can have it in their home and know, and that actually happened on Friday. Somebody posted on the Washburn Facebook group that the pump light was on and they weren't sure what to do, but Ben saw the post and got over there, I think, pretty quickly.
Is there, is there a letter? I know you keep mentioning a letter. Is there a letter that's going to accompany the notice and the FAQs that we haven't seen yet?
No, I sent out the copy of the letter.
Okay.
And yesterday, towards the end of the day.
Okay.
And it will have a link to the frequently asked questions document that will be on our website, and that's, Michelle had the addresses. I think she got them from Waterloo, Waterworks. So we have all property owners, and then also, like, for the renters, we have the occupant address. So just in case maybe the landlord pays the bill, we want to make sure that the occupant also knows what to do if, if the pump malfunctions.
I can share that document if you want to look at it.
It's unfortunate that we're not all online to view it, but.
Oh, is that, is that the problem, that you don't, that you can't see it?
The three of us have it.
That there are three of us, yeah, but, yeah.
That's the problem, there's just three of us.
And I know that.
Well, it hasn't changed, the letter did not change at all over the weekend. I sent it, I believe, last week, and I sent it yesterday. That hadn't changed. We just added a little bit of verbiage to the frequently asked questions based on the really great response Ben gave to a Facebook question, so we just kind of added, like, what services he provides.
I know there was a lot of information, a lot of good information was provided, a lot of questions answered, but yeah.
Yeah, it seems lengthy, but it all needs to be in there.
Well, we did try to organize it by category, and I think to Tavis's point, he felt like the rate increase was probably the thing that people had them. he felt like the rate increase was probably the thing that people had the most questions about. So most of those questions are at the beginning of that FAQ document, but then also, like, how to, what to do, how to know if your system's not working, how to best live with your system so that you don't cause a problem, and then also contact information. So hopefully, that's all, all outlined for people, and that answers their questions.
All right. And we had discussion about this previously, so I, I.
Think you'd be all right to support it?
I, yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna support it.
How about you, Chris?
I'm good to move forward today.
Because there is timeliness in regard to this. All right, so item number nine G. This is a motion to approve the letter to be sent to Washburn residents regarding a proposed sewer rate increase and a frequently asked questions document to be placed on the county website.
So moved.
Second.
All right, this is a motion, so all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Item number 10, any reports or information from the board? Okay, item number 11.
So moved, for adjournment.
I'll second that. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. We are adjourned.